I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pleasure of the flag, please. Pleasure.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of North Carolina, one nation under God, indivisible, the Father, and the Son.
Was it exactly seven? I saw that clock was off a little bit. Oh, it was seven by the time. Welcome, everybody, to the first meeting in September. Minutes of the August 19, 2015 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Steve, are we still, are we done with?
No, there's still some more there.
Okay, so we still have a little bit of?
Step 15.
Okay. Very good, very good. And I'll, I want to give my September first meeting a little report on the fund balances real quickly. The general fund, $1,320,997.30. The water fund, $1,901,00242.53. The sewer fund, $7,320,374.47. Major facility, $5,967,837.77. Any other discussion?
Budget money for floors upstairs, I guess for maintenance. Louis, where are we at with the equipment? Because I was up there when they were stripping the floor, and I know that question came up. Do we ever order?
I haven't ordered yet, but we're going to.
Okay, because it really looks nice up there.
It does.
And I'd like to see it being maintained and kept up, because that was, that's a big plus up there if you haven't been upstairs to see the floor.
Very good, I'll go back to the meeting. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Lou, you are on. Tonight might be an exciting night with these bid openings.
Very exciting. We've been slumming for days. We have, we had put out a bid for trash services, was due on the 28th, and we received bids from Waste Industries of Maryland, Waste Management of Maryland, and Republic Services, or also BFI. The Waste Industries of Maryland.
Is this who we're current? No, this isn't who we're.
Well, Waste Management.
Waste Management, okay.
Waste Industries. Their year, their total, what I did, I calculated the total volume of trash collected from the various residential units was 4,590. Then I added the dumpster, dumpster service to that. And for year one for Waste Industries, their price is $885,792. Year two, this is a three-year contract, $908,051.40. Year three, $931,461. That's Waste Industries of Maryland LLC. Waste Management of Maryland, which is what we have now, their year one is $564,196.80. Year two, $576,571.20. And third year is $588,693.60. The last bid, Republic Services or BFI, actually they're listed as BFI Waste Services, Pennsylvania LLC, but I think Republic owns them. Year one is $858,56. Year two, $883,704.52. Year three, $909,937.68. Based on the receipt of these bids, I would highly recommend that we stick with Waste Management of Maryland, the low veteran, current contract manager.
Yeah. Commissioner Van Rinen had a question in regards to what our current cost is. These numbers are still up from what we're currently paying, but what percentage? I think we budgeted about 6 percent increase?
I don't have the total number for what we're paying now. I know it's $875 per unit.
Per unit.
But I don't have the dumpster figures of time.
Okay.
I had sent it.
I know it's.
You asked me if I would have that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is up slightly from what we're currently paying now.
Eight seventy-five per unit, and this goes to eight ninety-six?
Eight ninety-six, so it's about twenty, twenty-two cents per unit?
It's likely, yes.
Yeah, so it's really, it may not be all that bad. Do we have a motion to accept Waste Management upon the review of, review of the bids?
Absolutely.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion with the bidding process? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second item I have is a proclamation. I'll read the proclamation to the record. Whereas the Wrights AME Church and the Bethel AME Church have been chosen to host the 2015 Annual Eastern District Conference of the Baltimore Conference Second Episcopal District African Methodist Episcopal Church. Whereas the Five Rivers Church, 290 Whitehall Road, Elton, will provide host facilities for the conference on Friday, September 11th, and Saturday, September 12, 2015. And whereas for over 190 years, church congregations in Baltimore City and seven counties in Maryland have gathered as Eastern District to strengthen ministries that exalt Christ in power, His people enhance His church. And whereas with the passion of founder Richard Allen and the spirit of Christ, churches of the Eastern District continue to serve the needs of their respective communities by feeding the hungry, helping the homeless, clothing the poor, establishing faith-based partnerships, encouraging civic involvement, promoting voter registration and health awareness, advocating for social justice, encouraging homeownership and financial independence. Now therefore, the Mayor's Commission of the Town of Elton nearby proclaim September 11th and September 12, 2015, as days of celebration to honor the annual Eastern District Conference of Baltimore Conference Second Episcopal District African Methodist Episcopal Church.
Do we have a motion to approve proclamation P-17-2015?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion about the proclamation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Very good. I've got a handful of items here, real quickly. I just wanted to report that at our next workshop, which will be next Wednesday at four o'clock, I hope that we can put the discussion about Buttonwoods to rest. I think we'll have a, hopefully a plan completely laid out that we can really move forward with the parking at Buttonwoods. So I know that that's on the list. Michelle, I think we also have the loitering ordinance discussion. I had asked the board to take a look at that loitering ordinance, and I think that we'll have an opportunity to discuss it next Wednesday, but I think it's something I think we all kind of feel the same way.
And I said before the meeting that I certainly agree, because I travel at night, and on Main Street, there's usually ten to fifteen people just hanging out, and certainly that's not a pretty sign if somebody's going through Elton, and that's our metro. So maybe we can come up with something to prevent that from happening.
Very good. So I'm looking forward to discussing that next Wednesday. We had a request from Meeting Ground, and this request actually came to us last year, I think here in a, in a town meeting. And I wanted to bring it up to the board, and I think that we just need to discuss this at some point collectively. We have nonprofits in our town, and Meeting Ground is requesting for the Town of Elton to waive their water and sewer bill to be like all the other nonprofits in our town. And of course, my feeling is, is I agree, quite frankly. I think that if we have given it to some, we should probably give it to others, but one of the things that we've been looking at, and I want, I would like the board to consider this and think about it, that if we could allow the nonprofits to have that minimum amount of water and sewer waived, but anything above the minimum water and sewer amount, I think that we should take a look at that, and they should be billed. So everyone is treated equally when it comes down to what we're waiving. Now, it would be up to the board if, for example, they wanted to waive that as a donation, but I think from an accounting standpoint, it would be great for the town to really have what our complete usage of water and sewer is, have it kind of in stone what the program is, so we don't guess. And I think that anything above that amount, that could kind of be, if we're going to continue to donate the full amount, I think that we need to show that as a donation in our budget. I think that's an item that we need to make everyone aware of, of how much we're actually donating to, whether it's the churches, or service organizations, or whomever it may be that's a nonprofit. Just a comment. I'd like for us to discuss that, maybe one of our upcoming workshops, if that's good with everybody. Very good. One of the things that has kind of been working on me for some time has been the farmer's market in Elton. And I think we have a, for several, for two businesses, we have a very successful farmer's market, which I think that we, that our community supports those two businesses very well. But I don't believe that that was ever the meaning of our farmer's market. I think our farmer's market was meant to be, we had local produce provided by local people, county people, and bring the product in and make it more of an event, whether it's a two-day event or a three-day event. But I want us to take a look at that maybe over the next couple of months, and I know Michelle's been sending out some information about local produce, kind of a program, but once again, talk to people, see what they feel about it. I just think that we have, businesses down there, our fees for the farmer's market is really nothing. I think that, quite frankly, I think anyone that doesn't want to sell produce to farmer's market is losing, losing out on a great opportunity, because the fee for a whole year is?
Hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty dollars. So you could be there all year long for a hundred and fifty dollars and really not paying any taxes to the community, per se. So I think it's something we need to take a look at. So I just want to put that in everyone's ears. I wanted to remind everyone that Labor Day is next Monday, offices are closed, the trash and recycling pickup will be one day behind schedule. Is that correct? One day behind schedule?
Mm-hmm.
All right, there's a few, I'm whittling down here, guys. I know everyone likes me to talk about grass clippings, but I wanted to bring up, I, question. Commissioner Gibbons had given me a call over the weekend, and we noticed that there was a large pile of grass clippings dumped right by the, I want to call it, it's the Ford property on High Street and Locust Lane. But there was no grass that was cut, but there was a huge pile of grass there. I also traveled down Locust Lane that day, and I saw in another pile of grass clippings that was parked there, or unloaded there, and the grass in the area was not cut. So someone is dumping their grass clippings off to the Town of Elton for us to pick them up. Now, I guess my, I just want to kind of try to raise some awareness here of how we can try to identify that as a community, because it does cost the Town of Elton money to pick up maybe clippings that doesn't even belong to the Town of Elton, per se. But maybe we can all keep our eyes out and see if you can identify anyone that may be dumping these clippings. I'm not sure what to do, other than we're going to pick them up, but I think that we do need to take a look at that. My second favorite issue I wanted to mention was cats. I have to say that I had a conversation with a veterinarian, and I actually have taken a little bit different, I never really gave an opinion or a position, but I've taken a little bit different position, and it was a position, and I'm going to look over here to Commissioner Van Rinen and say, he was, he actually stated to me, this could be the way that we should go. And I have to say that I looked at this TNR program, and I was kind of looking at it a little different light. We need to be looking at the safety of our public for our Town of Elton. You know, I don't want to say I don't care about the cats, but I'm worried about our residents. And with what just happened in Delaware with that little kitten, that newborn kitten was taken to the vet, and now there's thirteen or fourteen people that have to go through the rabies shops, including the veterinarian who handled that kitten. Not saying that that couldn't have happened one way or the other, but I think that we need to consider a program in place that when we do see these cats, especially kittens, that we get them taken care of, because our children in our town, if there are a kitten, they're going to be still friendly, and they're going to pick those kittens up, and it could be, it could cause a nightmare. So I have to say that we have to take a look at this a little bit differently. It is about the safety of our residents, and I'm not sure where we go from here, but I think it, give it some thought anyhow. So I'm all cats and I'm all grass. The sound system for the Town of Elton, we budgeted, I think, $10,000 to put a downtown sound system, Lou. I know that we had the original quote from our budgeting number from one group, and I actually was able to get a second bid from another entity that I'll pass over to you to take a look at. I think it was 10,000.
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand. So I've looked at this quote, and I looked at the original one we got. I don't know how you want to proceed with that, but I'm going to give this to you, maybe either we put it out on bid, or, I know that all the numbers that I've been getting are under $10,000, so I just wanted to make you aware, I don't know what the process has to be. But I'm going to pass this over to you, and you can disregard my notes on the back. That's for Lou, he can have and take a look at.
These will be valuable notes.
It was a big order.
Absolutely.
It was a big order. So I'll talk to you about that a little bit later on, but wanted to bring that to your attention. We just recently, in the last few days, we just sent out a brochure for our Parks and Rec Department, and it was a 16-page brochure. And that 16-page brochure I thought was very good. One of the comments that was made to me by a resident was that with our Parks and Rec in general has been one of those areas in our budget that really hasn't carried itself, that maybe we should have took a look at maybe some of the fees. I never looked at the fees before we took it to print, so I'm hoping that we kind of did in general, trusting staff, they may have took a look at it, and I haven't spoke to Mary in regards to that. But I liked the brochure, I thought it was very good, I'm not sure about the fee structure of it, I got my fingers crossed that it all worked out to a positive way there. But it got me thinking about the cost of putting that out there, really, it was really reasonable. It was about $200, $200 for 7100 copies, and then I think there was a?
Twenty-three forty-four.
Twenty-three forty-four, and then I think it was about another $1,000 or $1,200?
Ten eighty-three.
Ten eighty-three to get the brochures in the hands of the public. But I had the, I was very fortunate that, I want to say fortunate, I took my son back to College Park, he's in his final year at University of Maryland. And while I was there, at his doorstep was this College Park Resident Information Guide to City Departments and Services. And quite frankly, I was extremely impressed with this brochure. Now, this is a 60-page brochure, and I would think that we could probably cut this thing down to about 40 pages, including putting in the Parks and Rec into this for the spring edition. But what's unique about this is it actually gives every bit of information to our residents on who to contact, who to call, how big a twig should be before they put it in the trashcan. They should never put their grass clippings on the street because of the storm drains, but you can keep it on the sidewalk or on your curbing. There's a lot of things here in a, that was very positive that we never really got the message to our residents on. So I'd like to see if we can get a cost of maybe, what, a 40-page one of these, I'll let you guys take a quick peek at it, and when I'm done, you'll be able to look at it a little bit. But maybe what, a 40-page brochure, something similar to that. It has all the information, it tells everything, including recyclables, what we take, what we don't take, the times, I think it's a wonderful piece. And they covered it very well, and we might as well copy someone that's done it right. And I think College Park did it right. So that was something I wanted to mention to the board. We'll get a call still in and see what it kind of brings up, and I'm sure I can find that, a way to find that. With that, I am done. Mary Jo, do you have anything to add tonight?
Yes, I do. One, I will mention the weekend of September 11th and 12th, there's a lot going on here on the 12th. So September 11th, first of all, is Elton High's first football game, and I don't know if Margie has signed up to talk about, but we are decorating the town in purple and gold. So, and please support your high school by putting out the purple and gold. On Saturday, rather, we have from 8:30 to 12, the Out of the Darkness Suicide Awareness Walk. From 11:00 to 3:00, Singerly Fire Company will be down here with 30 pieces of apparatus. 12:00 to 6:00 is the Family Carnival at the VFW. 3:00 to 5:00 is a Taste of Historic Elk Landing. There's a lot going on in Elton that day, and there are several road closures that are on the Town of Elton website. So please sign up for the website to get these notifications. Go on elton.org and sign up, and you'll be able to receive everything. So I just wanted to make people aware of that, and I also, if?
You missed the American Legion seafood dinner.
Oh, the American, that wasn't on my list. I didn't know about that until yesterday. I received an email from Cecil County Economic Development from Jason Zhang, and I shared it with our alliance board yesterday at our meeting, but I thought I'd like to share at the town meeting as well. And it's the Cecil County FY 2015 Annual Report, Economic Development, and it's all about the Town of Elton. The Town of Elton experienced a surge of business development during FY 2015, over $10 million invested by new and emerging local businesses, ranging from Hertrick Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ramsey Ford dealership, to four new restaurants, The Coffee Place, Asian Garden, Gee's Pizza Kebab Takeout, and the promise of the Wawa Convenience Store at 302 West Plaski Highway in lieu of the former Knights of Columbus Hall. Additionally, planning and development activities included Veterans Hope Store adjacent to VFW Post on West High Street, Armed Forces Career Center in Delancey Plaza, and Union Hospitals Urgent Care at 123 Singerly Avenue. This new planned development in the Elton Business Community coupled with ongoing business activities signals growth in business in the coming years, and given the Town of Elton's pro-business commitment and strength of the Elton Business Leadership, the continuing success of Elton Community. So I thought this was great to get from Cecil County Economic Development, and it went out to the entire county of people that work in this field. So kudos to the board and to everyone in planning and zoning and everyone for this accomplishment. And that was it.
Mr. Horner?
I have nothing to report today.
Mr. Gibbons?
I think I've got it today, Dan, the skate park, there are some of the items, so do you have another use for that? I thought perhaps that might have been somewhat of a type of auxiliary building for your public work, is that so?
Yes.
And the idea yet, what you're going to put in there?
Oh, yeah, well, kind of equipment we're going in there, yes. Moving up three-inch equipment from the winter tree plant to the skate park, for the process moving in there.
So any of them will be housed or worked out of there initially?
Not until, if the skate park would go someplace else, I wouldn't house them in there. Until we get the skate park there, then I won't, I'll just keep the equipment for time being.
Excuse me, everybody. I want to start the meeting place. What I'd like to know is, Louis, do we have a list of all nonprofits in town? I'm concerned about the?
I wouldn't have a list of all the nonprofit organizations in the Town of Elton, but I probably, I did for research that.
Yeah, my only concern there is the word nonprofit that we would be giving up the first, whatever we decide as far as the water rates. And if we do for one nonprofit, how many other nonprofits are paying right now that we would not be collecting money on, and that would have to be calculated into the ongoing water rate?
We've got the ones that, we have the ones that we're not charging.
Right.
That's a good question.
Which are, there's not a lot of them, there was probably 10 or so. There's got to be a lot more nonprofits in here that we are charging. Couple other things I want to need, Louis. From DPW, I need, how many catch basins have we done this year? And how many more are we planning on doing before the end of the year? From, from probably CHIP, the cost of building a house, I'd like to know how much in permits we collect in building a normal house?
$300,000 house?
Nah, two, two to 225, something like that.
It's based on price, house price.
How about the most popular three additions or three things that residential's, as far as us with, we charge in permits? If you could give that to the board? For myself, and I'll prepare everything. The last thing I'm going to need from the Finance Department is the cost of annexation for a house. I had given a piece of paper a while ago, I think it was from Berlin, Maryland, but they had a really simple calculation for that, because I've had a couple other people talk to me about annexation, but I can't really give them any type of educated guess of the pros and cons to that. And again, just information if you can give me, so I can prepare something for the board. Send it out to the entire board, it's fantastic, and then I'll put the stuff together. And the last thing, I think I saw Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, can I ask you a question real quick about the county and the animal, animal services? You're currently trying to come up with something right now, or revamping stuff?
You would have to speak to the executive.
Fair enough, thank you. The only reason I bring it up is to piggyback off of the TNR, is I also want to include when we start talking about TNR, but also BS out, read specific legislation. If we can put that in there, really, I'd like to take the, have the county take the lead on that. But at least, our end with order. And that is, oh, last thing. What department or who is in charge of publicly, or publicizing the bids?
Bids for?
Anything.
For some aid.
And where do you, where do you publish it that somebody?
Cecil, wig and our website and direct mailings.
Okay.
We have, we may have a number of contractors, we send the invitation, the bid directly to them as PDF document.
Right.
And then we put it in the wig, and then we'll put it on our website. But a direct PDF type of thing is the best way to go.
And it's on our website?
Mm-hmm.
Under what department?
It's on the front page.
Thank you. Awesome.
More, more news items.
Yeah, all right. Thank you much, that's it.
Very good. Actually had a couple more things. It's great to see Councilman Alan McCarthy in the audience, great to see Mayor Fasona back there. And Dan, I have one question for you. The sidewalks, are we completed with the brining, or they still have some more?
Cecil, we've got some more, we're doing the downtown area first, and then from there we'll expand out. We've got some to take care of, a chapel run, we've got some to take care of, acre plot, so.
Very good. Looks great. All right, this is the time of the meeting. We open up the floor for the public to give us some input on the Town of Elton. Mr. Dwyer-Hare? And Dwyer, a wish and new year address?
142 West Main Street, Elton, Maryland.
Okay. Okay.
The reason I wanted to come in and say a couple words. And by the way, I agree with everything Commissioner Mary Jo said about the progress being made. There's a lot of good things going on. But I want to show, share with you tonight some things that are not good. And I just gave Mr. George two properties in Elton that I'm requesting action be taken, both code enforcement, and I'll be going to Child Advocacy Center, and also to Social Service tomorrow to talk to them. There's two locations, one's 120 West Main.
You have 120 West Main and 135 West.
Yeah. But for the old timers, you remember 120 West Main used to be a real successful retail business, Stanley's New Stand, very successful. Now, it is blinded. And I got to share some concerns that my wife and my daughter and I have seen with our own eyes that really concern me, that's why I'm going to the Child Advocacy Center tomorrow and talk to the Director of Social Service. About three weeks ago, my wife noticed a little baby in a cradle.
Was it a little push walker?
Walker. Less than a year old, all by herself, right in front of 120, the old Stanley's New Stand. The... Fortunately, when she pulled in, a piece of her pull right behind her and took care of the situation. And my daughter's seen that. Last Thursday, I happened to be going by 120, I looked over, and hears this little child, probably less than a year old, in this walker, or whatever you call it, all by herself. So, I sat there, I said, "I'm going to sit here for ten minutes and observe this, see what happens." And nine minutes, I'm going to call him, the chief, in ten minutes, and 911. At nine minutes, a lady comes down, young lady, completely emebrated. Now, see, I don't know what difference between drunk and what's drug, but this lady had no idea where she was. But I assumed she was a mother, because she dropped the thing and wandered off. So, she was one minute ahead of me. I could have taken that young child, bear Delaware, before anybody knew it. So, 120, I'm asking, and the reason I gave Mr. George a list here, I'm asking, by the way, Mr. George is an expert at writing letters to property owners. And I want a letter written to that property owner, and I want code enforcement looking at it. That building, by the way, is not even compliant with MDE, lead-based painting. There's young children living in that building. Now, it's reported to me just today that people are living on that first floor. And I don't know if that's true or not, because it's all, it's all papered up. Commissioner Gibbons just alluded to a little minute, a few minutes ago, about the people on that corner at nighttime. I see it too all the time. So, I'm asking you as mayor to direct the town administrator to have code enforcement take a look at that building, and he knows how to do it, because he's an expert writing letters. I've seen it.
I think he's already on it.
And I want action taken against the property owner, whoever that may be. I understand PNC Bank owns it, I don't want to go into it, I just want to... The property owner needs to be dealt with. Now, the other building, 135 West Main Street, is the nice-looking old building that's fallen completely apart next to the post office. It's that big white building, one day probably was a famous historical building in Elton.
Dr. Sprecher.
Exactly. Exactly.
He delivered me.
135, is that the old back building?
No.
This side, gotcha.
Yeah. Now, there's also, at least, they're not...
It's on the parcel with the property in the rear. It's all on the parcel.
Exactly. The, there's young children living there too. Now, the town wouldn't have anything to do with lead-based remediation, because that's MDE. But they could sure call down to MDE and find out, is that building in compliance? Or is 120 in compliance? I've been told they're not, but I don't know. I'm requesting action be taken. It might be legal action, it might be court. I'll be going to Child Advocacy Center tomorrow to talk to them and Director of Social Service, and talking to them, because that is, something's going to happen there. I'm seeing things, you know, I'm around town all day, I see things, and lately, I've gotten real concerned. So, I'm asking the town to take a look at the buildings and actually send a letter to the property owner. And look at the code enforcement, do they have smoke detectors? Do they have fire extinguishers? MDE, are they in compliance? You're going to find out if there's a problem with those two buildings, and one of these days is going to bite us, when some young child is hurt. So, I'm asking the mayor to take a look at those two buildings. In closing, I don't want to leave a little bit, in closing, the property owners need to be held liable, to include flying, maybe even take your town attorney and take them to court.
Let me ask you a real quick question, Dwight. How would you feel if we had an annual inspection from a town perspective, a yearly inspection, to look at your properties?
Oh, I had no problem, but I'm not worried about my property, got to take care of them. And I'll take, show you all of them. I have twenty-two of them in Elton, and I'm very proud of them.
And I know that.
And all my are in compliance with MDE. All my buildings are restored.
I think that...
But I think, to answer your question, it's going to be very difficult to do that from your standpoint, your hometown, because it's going to take a lot of manpower. But I can take you around and show you the buildings that you need to look at.
And I know currently, we, by our code, I don't think we have the ability to go in. I think this has been a discussion with this board over the years, when I look back at the minutes. But when you look at that brochure I just gave to, it's in Michelle's hands now, or it's almost in Michelle's hands now. College Park has annual inspections. The city of Newark has annual inspections. I don't know if it's related to, because they have the college students or so, but I really have mixed feelings on it, because I agree with you. I think that we have issues going on in some of these rental houses that need to be addressed, and we can't get in to take a look at them.
Well, you have a lot of authority. A mayor has a lot of authority in this town, you can correct a lot of things happening. One thing is, you can put the heat on the property owner. And I would enjoy that heat if I was that much of a slumlord, letting buildings fall apart, and having young children living in there.
That bothers me.
And that bothers me, so I'm going to Child Advocacy Center tomorrow, and I'm going to Social Service, and I'm going to report it. But they have their own channels of children. Just in closing, a couple, the water thing, you made a good comment on that. I'm concerned about that water thing. You can take a hard look at that. I don't know, you know churches have more endowments than the Town of Elton. And why are we going to let all these people be accepted? Because, you know, what do you think, I might even request it? So, take a hard look at that. That's a second bad precedent. And if the volunteer fire departments aren't paying the order bill, then shame on them. Because I'm paying it for them. You are, you are, you are, you are, you are. It's very careful in that. I really like your farmer's market comment. Should be for growers, retail, not wholesale, it's wholesale now. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bob Littenberg, Walnut Lane. Come on down, Mr. Littenberg.
Just a comment. I came through Elton last night about eight-thirty and what Dwight was talking about. I wouldn't feel comfortable, myself, walking from Bow Street to North Street with the people that are sitting on their steps, they live upstairs. I wouldn't feel comfortable. Anyhow, talking about your cats. We had a friend, none of you would know him, he's from Wilmington, was scratched by a cat and died about three months later.
Oh, wow.
An infection that could not be taken care of. He died from that. There's a lot of places in town where they're picking up grass clippings if the people are not in town. And picking up other debris that they're not in, they're not doing the trash, but they're picking up that, just one of those comments. Anyhow, what I wanted to talk about was a crime that's going on in town and every place else. I live in a pretty good neighborhood, and we've had a 1985 RXZ stolen in the neighborhood, was found in Wilmington, stripped and towed. And my, this is my experience in my yard. And my depth finder fishing tackle taken out on my boat when we put it in the night before to go fishing, go fishing. These are all locked, broken into. Pickup trucks have been stalled, things have been broken into twice. My shed in the back has been broken into. And last spring, my wife always locks a vehicle, didn't do it, put the golf clubs in, went to go play golf, and next morning, the golf clubs are gone. One of the homeless was trying to sell those golf clubs down to lawn at the produce place. My point is, I think with what you read in the paper each week with these people that are committing all these crimes, you look at what they've done, their own probation for this, they're charged and ready to go to trial for something else that they've already been charged to. They get them out on bail at one percent rather than the ten, because there's a loophole somewhere along there. Police Department, they make their arrest, and these people are on the street before they get back up here. It doesn't make sense. I suggested once before that maybe you as a mayor and the chief of police, add other mayors and chiefs from these other towns, go to the state's attorney and say enough is enough. When you charge these people with something, stick to it and don't plea bargain it all the way down. They might charge them with five different charges, plea bargain it down to the least two of the thing and convict, then they go to trial, and they'll go to trial, be convicted, be given a year, suspend the sentence, and put back on probation. It doesn't make any sense. I mean, it's got to be frustrating for you to be doing what you're doing.
You stole the words right out of my mouth.
I mean, it's got to be...
Chief, can you get that meeting scheduled with the state's attorney for us?
Sure. But I mean, I think you ought to have the mayors of all the towns. Now, Cecil County and Chesapeake don't have police departments, but Perryville, Rising Sun Northeast, they often do. It might be something to get them started to say enough is enough with this. Because the Cecil week, every single week, it's the same thing over and over again.
It is.
I thought there was an organization that's doing that now, because my pastor went to a meeting. Joe Fatsal, you had a meeting like that, meeting recently with the state's attorney, with mayors?
Yeah.
Does anybody want to add some light?
We just had a meeting with all the mayors, the Mayor's Drug Task Force.
I didn't go. I wasn't invited.
The state's attorney was there, and all the mayors agreed with you, Bob, that the one percent fee is way too low, and we're going to be looking at it. He's going to be looking at it, and we're going to help him to try and see if we can get some law passed to make it up to ten percent. So, it's ten percent in this county. Harper County's ten percent, but we, these guys here, cut these guys a break. So, he knows that. He's well aware of it. So, he's going to work on it and see what we can do to get that raised.
Well, I think it's ten percent through the whole state, but there's a loophole someplace along the line that they can get away with the one percent.
Thank you, Bob.
So, I agree with Dwight, there's several places in town that should be checked into in this lead payment thing. How shall I put this without stepping on a toe somewhere?
Come on.
Not too far from, all right, let's put it this way, Mike's old store. Those people are moving in and out of there every three months, the, I can't think of the guy's name that owns it, he's, lives at the doctor, whatever, if I could name the name, I would do it. But they're in and out every three months, and I know that they're not going in here and checking for a lead of payment every time. I got a letter in the mail from that little apartment of mine. And anytime anybody moves, you have to notify the state, and they'll send somebody to check each time that somebody moves in.
That's a good point.
I know that they're not doing that out there.
They're being fined if they do.
Huh?
They're being fined if they do.
Well, evidently, they're not paying the fine sometimes.
Thank you. Ms. Margie Blystone, 14 John Adams, come on down.
Hello, Cindy, you want to come with me?
Can't miss any federal office.
108, you work that.
108.
You work that.
Mr. Mayor, you had a plan to paint the town purple and gold for the high school.
Yes.
So, Michelle seems to know exactly what I wanted to do before I even knew I was doing it, so she's amazing. Our plan is to support Elton High School and football team. We want two-foot ribbons, they are all-weather ribbon, on the fence on Bridge Street on either side, we'll be doing purple and gold. And along Elton Newark Road on the Gilpin Manor fence, the Gilpin Elementary School, and on Singerly Firehouse on the fence that they have out front. We're not going to tie them, it's merely going to be looped through the fence. And this will intimidate the buses as they bring the other football players through for the games.
Yes, it will.
So, we really want to support the high school. We want to, I look to the students of today as the volunteers of tomorrow. Those are the people that are going to care about the town. So, what we can do to support the high school, that's what we're going to do. So, we are planning on Wednesday, the ninth of September, to go ahead and, four o'clock in the afternoon, we've got a woman who is head of the Boosters Club there, and she's going to get a group of kids together. We're hoping to get cheerleaders and football players and mayor commissioners and people who are involved with the town out to help put these ribbons through the fence and hopefully get a story in the paper for it, and let everybody know about the football games that are coming. We're going to do this Wednesday, the ninth, for the game that will be played on the eleventh. And we will do it again on, in October for their October ninth homecoming game. So, we'll be celebrating that. We have spoken with Gilpin Manor, they've said that that's fine. State Highway has okayed it. We're waiting for the board to come back from Singerly to say it's okay to put the ribbon on the fence. And Singerly also said that they will put something on their marquee about the games, so we'll have that also going on. So, I just, I asked that we get the community involved in putting the ribbons out and supporting our high school, and that everybody will also attend to the games and support everybody, and I think that's it.
Well, listen, I appreciate everything that you're doing, and I saw, I see in the back, I see Dennis Manain in the back tonight, and I want to thank him for hosting the pasta dinner on September the tenth, eleventh, or the tenth, for the football team before their home opening game. So, he's going to supply a pasta dinner, the pregame meal, which is very, very nice. I think this could lead into a really nice tradition. The Elton, if I put high expectations on this football team, they won the state championship the last time I sat here, so I told them that they've got to do it this time. So, we're, I think we're given, if we can get the community behind them, which I think we have, hopefully, that'll get that little extra boost to score that extra point. Anything?
When is Dennis hosting a dinner for them?
Thursday, the, is Thursday, September, is that the tenth?
Have they been made aware?
Yes.
Okay, the reason why I asked the German, not German, what's her name?
He's doing the first game. He's doing it, he's doing this Thursday.
Okay.
And he always does it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so when buses and the cars go up and down the street, we're going to have streamers flying on Bridge Street and on Elton Newark Road, so.
I guess our intent of the workshop, we're going to have it from four, we're still going to have it from four to six, but then what we'll do is, I'm available to come till dark to help however we can, or I can help a little bit before maybe the board can get a little bit involved.
Excellent. That's fantastic.
Very good.
And I also invite any members of the community to come out and help out, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, have no one else signed up tonight? Would anyone else like to say anything this evening?
The name was Baudazore, just...
Baudazore, yes. Okay, it is ten minutes in, this meeting is adjourned.